Staff who are supposed to be here are also present or their substitute. So welcome to all of you. The first item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval Council. We do have a request to amend the executive session. We want to add five minutes and add RCW 42 dot three zero dot one one zero zero one I. Is there any objection to that? And I will read all of that into the record as we go into executive session, so.
I don't have an objection, but I would like to ask that when we have executive sessions, for the public that comes here, that we aren't asking them to leave the room, that we have our executive sessions towards the end of the program. I know that this is on the agenda for tonight, so if we have to have it tonight. But I would prefer we didn't make our citizens leave the room when we could have the executive sessions in the after the regular agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Hart. And yes, typically, we have been trying to have them at the end of the meeting. In some cases, because of individuals that need to be there at the executive session in order to get them on their way sooner, we'll have it at the beginning. And I think that's the occasion here. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, and there was some scheduling issues with one of the attorneys. So, yeah, excuse me.
And there were some scheduling issues with one of the attorneys involved. So that was one of the reasons that it was at the top. So, but yeah, it's a good idea. Totally understand the logic, so.
Ms. Frost, so you had a question?
Oh, I just was going to ask what the reasoning was. I know that we've done it in the past, usually, that there's something behind it. So thanks for clarifying.
Okay. Any other additions or subtractions from the agenda that counsel would like to see? Hearing none. What is the desire counsel on the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second it.
You, Ms. Ripley?
Yep.
Okay. All right, we got a motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Ripley to approve the agenda as presented. I'm just gonna go down the list again. Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
I two vote yes. The motion passes. Agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the invocation. I know we have somebody here for the invocation. I ask you, sir, to step up to the microphone. I douse the audience to please rise and remain standing afterwards for the pledge of allegiance.
While I come to you in this prayer with Thanksgiving in my heart, first for being invited to open this session. It's a great honor for new life. And I'm grateful and thankful that this council allows for the session to be opened in prayer. That shows in itself where their hearts are and that they require and request your presence in it. I ask that you'll give that to them, that they will make every decision with your wisdom, with your guidance and your understanding. And I ask, Father, that you'll protect the citizens of Sunnyside, especially our children, and that you'll guide us with compassion and peace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Cus, could I get you to bring me the public comment form as soon as Martinez is finished signing? Next item is our public comments, and I'll get the list here in just a second. And the citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes. Counsel may refer items to staff to review and/or research for presentation at a future meeting. It is not our tradition to necessarily make a great deal of comment on the public comments, but we definitely, I want to assure everyone, we do take notes and we take them seriously. So, thank you, sir. First name on my list is Sharon Dolan.
Good evening, everyone. As all of you know, we've been kind of showing up here for about two years now. And I would like to thank counsel for questioning the spending vouchers at the last meeting. These questions exposed errors and duplicate postings on the report. Counsel, you are the stewards of our tax dollars and represent your constituents. You are responsible and must make sure and approve that the tax dollars and that make sure they are spent wisely. Keep asking your questions. Kudos to all of you. I understand at the last Parks and Rec meeting, it was announced that the city had found somewhere $600,000. How can we be sure that there are no more misplaced, misallocated or missing monies? Once again, we are requesting that possibly some of that $600,000 could be used for a forensic audit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next name on the list, Marisela Santana?
Hello, my name is Marisela Santana. I'm the environmental justice coordinator for AIA. And I'm here to talk about in a very important event that we are hosting on May 1st. And this is for workers' rights and our community's health, that we have a right to clean air and clean water. And we will be hosting a march for partnering up with United Farm Workers, who's our guest of honor. And we're boycotting up in Whitt Mill at 2:00 P.M. And then we are starting the march at 3:30 P.M. At the intersection between East Lincoln and Yakima Valley Highway. And I think it would be amazing, you know, if all of you all got in, Teresa, Vicky, both of the Wikis, Jorge, Julia, Dean, Mike and Jaclyn, you know, you all assist. I think it's important, you know, that our community leaders come to these marches. We're gonna have a resource fair from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. Yeah, I think it's important that our community leaders assist just because it shows, you know, the causes that we're fighting for. There's been May Day marches in Yakima, but this is the first time we're doing it here in Sunnyside. And we really want to highlight all the work that United Farm Workers has put in to address industries and the damages that have caused on the workers' rights and their health. And so that's why we're doing it, so that way we could share their stories. And then we would love to, you know, if you want to speak some words through the event, we're happy to do so. But yeah, I think, you know, to see community leaders out here will inspire the community to come together, because I think that's what we need right now. And I really hope you all to see you there. And I also sent out an email a couple of weeks ago with a flyer, but I really appreciate it, you know, if you take a look at it. And so, but you don't have to be there the whole time. Just come when, if you can, but thank you.
Thank you. And Teodora Martinez?
You guys need to stall. Anyway, my name is Thea, but I live in the Outlook area, and I'm a mental health therapist for the Yakima Nation. And I wanted to make a comment regarding some misinformation that was shared about marijuana use and schizophrenia. So, I mean, I don't know if it's too late to mention it, but I did bring my diagnosis book. This is what all mental health therapists use to actually diagnose someone with schizophrenia. As you can tell, it's very thick, very, very full of information. But this is the criteria that we have to follow in order to diagnose someone with schizophrenia. And this book was made up, and this was just updated in 2022. And if you ever look at, and yes, you can download it for free, it has every possible professional from all different aspects, and their names and titles are all listed. But basically, I know I only have so much time. I did look up schizophrenia and the criteria for schizophrenia. And I was looking to see if any of it is caused by marijuana use, right? Because I think that was brought up. And I know, it really doesn't, you know? It does say the disturbance is not attributed to the psychosocial effects of a substance, meaning drug of abuse and medication or other medical condition. It does say that in this book, that's a criteria. So if I'm trying to diagnose someone with schizophrenia, I have to make sure they don't have that, okay? And this new diagnostic book has also now added many additional things, such as risk, culture-related diagnosis, sex and gender-related diagnosis, association with suicidal thoughts of behavior. Yeah, and I read that one too. And it says approximately 5% to 6% of individuals with schizophrenia die by suicide. Okay, so 5% to 6%, not as much as I heard before. So I just wanted to make that clear. Again, this is the book that many of us mental health therapist professionals use to actually diagnose people with schizophrenia. So if I don't follow these rules, I can get into major, major trouble, because I don't think any of you would want to be misdiagnosed with schizophrenia, would you? No, you wouldn't. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that is the last of public comments that's been registered, unless somebody is dying to get up here and speak a minute. Hearing none. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Again, as I've said many times in the past, when you tell us is when we learn things, we don't know what you're thinking, because we can't read your mind. We love to hear from you. And I know it's sometimes terrifying to get up here and speak into a microphone before counsel, but we're normal people, I assure you. So don't be scared of us. Don't be scared of any of the staff members. We just want to hear what you have to say, so we welcome that. Item six, executive session. And this is going to lead to all of you, for the most part in the audience, being invited to step outside for this period of time. But let me read what this executive session is about. Pursuant to RCW 42 dot three zero dot one one zero one C, to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price. However, final action or of selling or leasing the property shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. Also, RCW 42 dot three zero dot one one zero zero one G, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employee or review the performance of a public employee, however, subject to RCW 42 dot three zero dot one four zero four. Discussion by a governing body of salaries, wages and other conditions of employment to be generally applied within the agency shall occur in a meeting open to the public. And when a governing body elects to take final action, hiring, setting the salary of an individual employee or class of employees, or discharging or disciplining an employee, that action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. And also, RCW 42 dot three zero dot one one zero one I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. That was a lot, which means in 25 minutes, we've got a lot to talk about. And so we'll give the audience a chance to step out. I know there are some who are going to be staying here, and you know who you are. So give you just a few seconds there. And action, I don't think action is expected. Do you think so?
Uh, no, more direction on one. And then there's going to be two separate subjects. So it sounds like we want to tackle the real estate one first.
Okay, so but no action expected?
No action expected on that. And the staff can stay in on this particular one, but the second one, we'll have to ask some of the staff members to leave, because the real estate may be pertinent to just about everybody in some capacity.
Are we back?
We are now.
Okay, and recording is in process? All right, so back in open session, there was no action from the executive session. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. It was a long executive session, but it was very necessary. And I assure you, counsel was on task the entire time, and some good discussion happened, so. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes of the March 3, 2025 study session meeting. Minutes of the March 10, 2025 regular meeting. And that is it. What? Is there any items that counsel would like to bring back for discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
In the minutes on March 3rd and March 11th, or whatever the date is, the roll call on the city council is not correct. Both of them show Counselor Beeler, and he was not here at either one.
No, no.
And I wasn't here at the March 3rd, but I was March 11th. That was the day I was sworn in. So just housekeeping, nothing serious.
Okay. We will make an adjustment to correct that. And I'm sure it's already in process. Okay.
I'm sure it's done.
Any other items that need to be brought off on this one? All right, what is the desire of counsel on the consent agenda as corrected?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Counselor Hancock, second by Counselor Vasquez to approve the consent agenda as amended. Debate on this item? Hearing none. Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes. Active agenda. First item on there, 70 Ray Road surplus. Approve a resolution declaring the 70 Ray Road property to be surplus. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. City of Sunnyside acquired the former Tucker Sellers property located at 70 Ray Road in September of 2022 for a half million dollars. Property includes 2.72 acre parcel with a 4,500 square foot industrial building, originally constructed in 1978. Since the acquisition, the city has leased the property to a company called Masterbuilt. They produce custom cabinets. And right now, they're on a month-to-month lease, $1,000 a month. When I arrived here at the city of Sunnyside, they were occupying that building. We had basically a choice to kick them out or to keep the building safe and continue their work. So that was a decision that I made. Masterbuilt has occupied that facility for over a year. In February 2025, the city commissioned an appraisal company, CBRE, to determine the current market value of the property. Appraisal concluded that the as-is market value of the fee simple interest at $540,000, which includes $245,000 in surplus land value. The building itself comprises mostly open warehouse space, approximately 96% with an 11-foot clear height and access via three at-grade overhead doors. The property is serviced by a private well and septic system and is connected to public power and natural gas. City administration recommends declaring the property surplus to the city's needs and proceeding with listing it for sale through a professional commercial real estate broker. Staff has identified and intends to work with Russ Roberts, certified commercial broker with Keller Williams Yakima Valley, who will list and market the property accordingly. Mayor?
Counsel, questions for the city manager?
Yeah. So reading through that, there's several things that stuck out to me. One of them was the gentleman who did the report said that the property was purchased to be a dog shelter. That's not what I understood. I understood it to be a fire training center, but that was prior to my time on council.
So that, yeah, the dog shelter part was not entirely correct. That was not the reason behind the purchase. There was a vision of a second fire station to service that into the city. The fire department did a study on that and looked at travel time from that location to different parts of the city and discovered that it would be quite beneficial to have a station over on that site. And also, as far as mutual aid calls and that sort of stuff with Grand View, it would be beneficial as well. Then the idea and the property and all of that, through discussions, it kind of morphed into different things. The idea of a fire training center, which would be helpful here in Yakima Valley for all fire departments to have a fire training center. And we were in conversations at that time in several different areas, including police dispatch, that having a center here in Sunnyside would be beneficial to the rest of Yakima Valley. And so a fire training center was considered there. And then also, because of the existing building and the issue with the Humane Society no longer taking dogs, they were running out of space. I guess I say animals, not just dogs. They were running out of space, and so they weren't going to take any more animals. And it was going to be up to us to start doing some animal control as opposed to letting the Humane Society do that. And we needed a facility to house those animals. And that facility was there in place already. We did some research, and it was cost prohibitive to convert that.
And my question isn't so much about that. It's just straightening up the record, because it says dog, dog shelter. And that's not, I think, when the money was taken out of accounts, that is not what it was. And so, you know, I just want to know when we're putting money back into the accounts, that it's going back in with interest? I mean, these are the kind of accounts that we just, it's not out of the general fund. Most, some of it is, but a lot of it's out of enterprise funds. So how is that going to be returned? And we use the well for water we did at the park. So if we surplus this, are we, do we still have access to that well?
That's a good question, Mr. City Manager.
And that's something I've talked to Cus with and the real estate broker. We can keep those water rights for ourselves, and it's probably pretty wise. Cus, did you want to add anything, you know, in terms of the benefit, obviously, to keeping it? You don't have to have a dry bathroom, essentially.
Right. Currently, the well from that facility services the tractor shop and the park itself. So it would be beneficial that if we sell it, that we retain the well and the water rights and then just meter the two buildings and the park and just use them as water customers.
That's what it then, I mean, now it's going to be a municipal city well. So is there a cost associated with that that we're going to have to realize? Because now we're going to own the well and, you know?
I believe we're.
Owning it now?
We have the cost now, because our employees are the ones that are maintaining that. Our employees are the ones that are doing the sampling for that. So that wouldn't change. We would continue to do that, because once you, that would be considered a Class A water system. And our water operator, Mr. Giuliano, has the water certification to be able to manage that without any problems.
And then need eventually to loop that into our water system?
That's too small, the well.
Oh, well, okay. It's hard, I'm sorry. Or, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
It's okay. It says the title policy of the subject property was not available for review while preparing. Based on property inspection, there are no known easements or encroachments. So that would have to change. I mean, if we've got a well that's on that property, there's got to be some kind of notice of that on the title, correct, Cus?
Yeah, the well is located on the northeast section of that building. It's just behind it. But we would have to identify that in an easement that we could go in and maintain it, sample it. We would have to continue the, I'm not sure if it's tied together for power with the building and the pump. So we would have to figure how to meter the electricity for that. But there'd be some things that we would have to do.
Yeah, and then.
Mr. Hart?
I was just curious, the fact that I think basically that keeping the well, we need to do that anyway, because that's the only thing that's watering South Hill Park, correct?
Not South Hill.
I mean.
Sunny View.
Sunny View. Excuse me, Sunny View.
Yeah, it serves the rest from Sunny View Park and.
Does it do the lawns?
No, no, it just, this is a residential well. You can only do 5,000 gallons a day or less. The water that park is watered through SVID and the pump. That is located on the northeast corner of the property.
But it is important to hang on to those water rights.
Well, yeah, yes, because if we sell it, sell the well, and I buy it, and I get mad with the city, I can cut you off, and I don't have to, I don't have to let you take water for it. So this way, we control our own destiny.
I have another couple of questions.
I'm going to give other people a chance to ask questions, Ms. Hancock, because you've had a lot. So, council members, any other council members have questions? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So just so the public, I guess, understands, if we sell this property, it's not, not everything's going to go back to a general fund. It's going to go back to five different funds, right? The REIT I, REIT II, general fund, water fund, EMS fund. That way, they kind of understand that we can't just use that for, say, a community center, right? I mean, there's enterprise funds, you know, certain percentage. And that way, oh, well, you sold the property, now you could use it for that. Just for clarification for the public.
That's correct. As the revenue comes in, it will not all flow back to the general fund. If the piece of property was paid for out of five different account line numbers that are in your chart of accounts, the revenue will allocate back to those departments and to those enterprise funds based on the amount that they originally put into the purchase price.
Okay.
Thank you.
With interest? I mean, don't we have to do interest on those funds?
You know, I don't know if there was a specific agreement internally for that purchase that included interest, so that's something that I'd have to take a look at.
Isn't that generally the case, though, in Washington?
It generally should be. However, I am not aware of that being the case at this moment in time.
Oh, boy.
We send to the.
Only being here, though.
But I will certainly make a note of that and have staff research it for you.
All right, further questions from counsel? Okay, Ms. Hancock?
Okay, and then the other thing is, we don't know how, if we surplus this, we don't know how long it's going to take. And in reading through the analysis from the people who did the analysis, I saw where they said that we're renting it for $1,000 a month and that the rent actually could be equal to $27,000 a year. So $12,000 to $27,000. So that's something we might need to look at if we don't get a sale right away. And then the letter of intent with DK Bain, when we purchased that property, lists the offer price of $475,000? So I was just wondering what that discrepancy was between the $475,000 and the $50,000 we actually paid for it.
And the 500,000, you mean?
I mean, 550,000. I wish.
Go back and look at that. I know the seller of the property, the owner of the property, was a licensed realtor. And so, yeah, we worked with him directly, and he was a realtor through DK Bain, but the owner of the property was the selling agent as well. So I don't remember all the details on that one.
It's in the packet.
It is in the packet, but I don't remember how that all transpired and the reason that went up. I'd have to go back and look that up or ask some questions.
Yeah, I would like to find that out. Why, I mean, why there's a discrepancy between the offer, the intent, letter of intent, and what we actually paid for it?
Yeah, there was obviously something that changed in there, that city got some benefit somewhere from something, but we have to go back and find out.
I think we need to know, so.
Good question.
That's it.
I remember being on counsel during that whole process. And of course, obviously, I don't remember that particular incident or why that happened. But I know counsel really worked hard on this one. We felt good about this, because, you know, this was a piece of property that had some potential for us. And so I know for myself and Ms. Hart, who was on counsel at the time too, it's kind of difficult to see that we are in a position where we want to let this one go. And so, you know, I too struggled with it, because I had this vision of a second fire station out there. I can't remember what, where I was in a town recently that was half the size of Sunnyside, and they had a north fire station and a south fire station, saying, that's what we need in Sunnyside. And we're not going to do that. We're going to keep one fire station in the middle of town, and they're going to have to get through traffic all the time. But yet, we're in a position now where, A, we need the funds from the sale of the property. Every department where that fund is going to be allocated to is going to need that little injection of cash. But also, even if we keep the property, it's going to probably be 20 years before we're able to follow that dream and develop that fire station, which is really discouraging on the one hand, because, oh, boy, I'd sure like to see that happen here. But my position on this one, I think it's a necessary move. I think the ship has kind of sailed on the dream that we had of developing that and doing what we're going to do. But that's my opinion. I invite comment from the rest of counsel. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to thank Mike for going through the process, getting an appraisal. I mean, this property was purchased without an appraisal a couple of years ago. So I really thank you for doing that, not only this property, but the Muntz and property. You know, we sold it with the first time without an appraisal. And now we're actually doing what needs to be done.
Appreciate it. And Mayor, if I may, I think one of the nice things, it is retail establishment. It's really a prime spot next to the park, tremendous amount of traffic. So, you know, I already had a few inquiries, because in Sunnyside, I don't know if there's any secrets, you know? So, yeah, it's really interesting, you know, how, it's pretty amazing. But anyhow, it is prime property in a very tremendous location. So I'm really hopeful that somebody comes along, buys it quickly. And I will say, there is a tremendous. And I will say there is a tremendous amount of interest from the gentleman that owns that that cabinetry establishment to be in there. He does a tremendous job as well of, you know, he's building cabinets all across the valley. So he's really well known. And so he's already expressed interest, you know. And I told him, look, I have to go through the proper process. We have to surplus it, you know, I can't make you any promises. And, you know, once it is listed with a real estate agent, you know, I I take a hands-off approach so there's no conflicts of interest. And and, you know, I'm not pushing for one particular person. So, you know, which is, I think, the right route to go to have a real estate agent involved. So anyhow, that's that's kind of all the information, you know. I think we did our due diligence on this one for the council to make a good decision. And, you know, we'll go with whatever you decide.
All right, further questions or comments from council? I know Ms. Frausto stepped out. We'll give her a second to come back and then we will see where council wants to go on that.
The date on that approved by city manager, December 25, 2020, is that when it was approved back then?
Yes.
Now, on 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 Mr. Gonzalez's report that he submitted, he put December.
Oh, that's a typo, that's my fault, that's my fault.
I was going to say the purchase happened after that because in 2020.
Yeah.
So we need to correct that.
Yeah, I don't know how that got to December 25th, forgive me for that.
Twenty five, twenty.
Yeah.
That's why we have seven people on council with.
Yeah.
Seven different sets of skills because I skip right over that stuff. I'm the guy when they say, I'll bet you never noticed that I changed that first word in that paragraph. It's a good grief, you could have changed the entire order of the paragraph, I wouldn't have noticed. I got the idea, so. All right, Council Frausto is back. And so on this item, on the railroad surplus, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move. Yeah, go ahead, second.
All right, we've got a motion by the deputy mayor, second by Council Hancock, to approve a resolution declaring the 70 railroad property surplus. Debate on this item. Hearing none, do the vote, Council Hancock.
Yes.
Council Ripley.
Yes.
Council Frausto.
Yes.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
Council Hart.
No.
Depp, sorry about that. Deputy Mayor.
Yes.
And I too vote yes, but grudgingly. In the opinion of the chair, the motion passes. Item B, strategic planning, discuss strategic planning for the future, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So tonight, I want to take a moment to highlight the importance of strategic planning, not just as a bureaucratic exercise, but as a fundamental tool for guiding our city forward with purpose and vision. In my nine months as city manager, I haven't been able to find any evidence that a strategic economic development plan has existed at the city of Sunnyside, at least in the past decade. Damian, could you raise your hand? Damian Davis here is here, Principal of Davis Consulting. He'll be present to help us out tonight. He's working on our soccer master plan with the Parks Recreation Board. So thanks for coming tonight. So really, strategic planning is about, you know, really creating that list of goals that we want. It's about choosing what matters, aligning our limited resources here and making thoughtful decisions that serve us both today and our residents of the future. So the reason I'm bringing this up and, you know, I was at a Rotary meeting and there's, I mean, there's multiple reasons, but I think, you know, a sense of urgency. Chief Lehman and I were at a Rotary meeting and Rhonda Marquez came to the meeting, was our chief speaker. And and she was seeing some some really troubling signs, you know. She she usually does a big job fair each year where 40 to 50 employers come out. And she said only 15 had had signed up. And, you know, she's been essentially begging some of the the companies to come out. And, you know, I started asking some questions, you know, about our workforce and and really the future of Sunnyside. You know, certainly, the closing of the dairies came up and, you know, our ties to ag and kind of how the 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 state is really pushing a lot of rules and provisions on the on the dairy industry in particular. And kind of pivoted a little bit to, you know, what type of what type of workers do we have here? What what kind of employees? What's the education attainment level? So I asked Rhonda, I said, you know, typically, and Rhonda is is one of the directors at WorkSource Development. That's that's right off Edison by the mall. And I said, you know, typically, what's the makeup of a person that comes in to get a job? Educational attainment. She said, most don't have a high school education. What percentage? Probably 80% of the people that walk through my door. I said, you know, how many are English speakers first? Less than half. You know, what what how many, what's the writing level? You know, they struggle with writing typically and reading English. You know, percentage of tech folks, not very high. You know, you know, anecdotally, where's our economy going? We need a plan for the future, you know? We need a plan for the next 10, 15, 20 to, you know, really for the future of Sunnyside. So that that's sort of what what prompted this today to really get ahead of that. And and I think also talking with Damian, you know, because I talked to him a little bit about, you know, the the process we're going through with the soccer master plan. And we talked, I think, last Thursday or Friday about, you know, this conversation I had. And, you know, how, you know, how can we pivot a little bit on this plan? Because in my one-on-one recently with Councilman Frausto, she, you know, she brought up a good point, too, is like the alignment process, you know. I certainly don't want to get ahead of myself, but, you know, doing the soccer master plan and was really a call from the community to say, look, we want soccer. And how does that tie into economic development? But, you know, there's certainly a larger picture that we all really need to step up and and we all really need to get our heads in the right places for the really the future of Sunnyside. So Jackie, I don't, can you bring up that that information that I sent? Thank you. Oh, right. Yes, please, thank you. So I've got some hard copies. So and and I'm going to, we're going to cruise through this really quickly. So so this is information that I originally presented November 4 of 2024 at our workshop meeting. So you can roll to the next one. Go ahead, Jackie, next. So these were some of the things that I talked about then in my quarter. We looked for the need for a 20-year strategic plan. We had Damian and I had actually gone to Y C D A to seek a grant, which they pivoted us to more the seed grants. So that didn't work out for the funding of that strategic plan. Again, roadmap for the future. Go ahead, you can roll forward. Again, I'm going to roll through this really quickly. And these were some of my observations that 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 could be addressed in a strategic plan. A need for financial policies of employee training. Council priorities is something I'd like to talk about today. And and again, you'll have this in your packet, so you can roll through this. Council priorities for 2025, this is something I want to address before the the night is over, you know, timing of that. And, you know, really having a study session of some sort or retreat on a Saturday that that we can spend the full day together, really prioritizing, you know, what what we'd like to do. Go ahead, Jackie. Go ahead, financial policies needed. We don't have a ton of them and we could we can certainly use those. Go ahead, Jackie. Employee training and growth, next. Of course, everybody wants a safer city, next. Need for increased housing stock. And this is something, as as we've been working with developers, have been really eye-opening, the lack of housing. And we'll address that in some of the numbers that we that we've gathered. Go ahead. Again, soccer master plan. This is something the the community has really asked for the last couple of years to look into that. And I feel fortunate Damian's here to help us out with that. Go ahead. Youth engagement and civic development, that's something we're currently working on, next. And then our legislative priorities, grants for soccer fields, grants for water well infrastructure, homeless planning dollars, you know. And I'm proud to say that Senator King's office contacted us today and all of our projects made it in the capital budget. So 1.3 million will be coming our way once the governor signs that. 515,000 for Tina North Soccer Park, 515,000 to fix the infrastructure of our pool. And then another 275,000 for fixing up and sprucing up the gazebo area. So thank you, thank you, councilors, for all your help with that. Awesome job in Olympia, truly a team effort. Jacqueline did tremendous amount of work with that, putting together different items. So next, marketing of the city, that's something we're doing with the LTAC dollars to really help market business. And and so really proud of some of the work we've already done with, I think everybody knows where Jades is now. And, you know, she's got thousands of views on that. So so that's been been fun to watch, next. Animal control is something, you know, we addressed earlier this year. There was a subsequent meeting in Zilla with the county. We do have this on our next study session to continue talks about this. This is a huge regional issue that we'll continue to address. So we're going to talk about that at our next study session, next. And then the homeless plan is necessary, something I'm now the chair of the Yakima County Homeless Coalition. So been working quite closely with the county to hopefully come up with a solution. Next, please. So to kind of pivot, why we need to start strategically planning. Dairy industry is definitely seeing a shift. Agriculture is hitting challenging times. The majority of our workforce is not educated and their wages certainly can't keep up with inflation. This was, again, my recent conversation with workforce development. More than half the people they serve, English is not their first language. Most don't have a high school education. Many cannot read efficiently and the majority don't possess a technical skill. Next, please. So here's some some numbers we've gathered. Median income in our community is 53,350 compared with the state average of 94,605. So we're significantly less than the Washington State average. Next, please. Here's some key facts again. We're right around 17,000 people. If you look at some of the the high school attainment, 31% of our residents have a high school degree, 16% with some college, 8.9 bachelor's degree. You know, the a large majority with without a high school diploma. So I won't go through all of this, council, you know, you can review this on your own. Again, the median income for a household, 54,834. Next, please. Again, these are some income stats that I won't bore the crowd with with reading these all by, you know, mouth. Go ahead. You know, poverty in our community is nearly 20%. The the state average is 10%. So again, we're above in that category. Educational attainment, you see 9% bachelor's degree compared with the state average of 40.5%. And you could see some of those stats there. So we're certainly behind in educational attainment, which affects wages, which affects, you know, the type of houses people can buy and all those sorts of things. So a little bit of class of worker, working for private companies, 71.5. Self-employed, 2.2, private nonprofit wage salary workers, 4.4%. So you can move next. These are just some commuting stats that you guys can read on your own. Go ahead, Jackie. Just some more stuff for you to read over. Homeownership rate, one one good thing is we do have a pretty good homeownership rate, which 59.8%, which is solid. Some of the some of these these values may be a little skewed with with how crazy the real estate market's gone. So next, here's a really shocking stat that we found. And and this is something, I got this from the folks at Buy Right. They gave me a big book of a study that was done in 2023. And and one of the problems we have in Sunnyside is just the age of our housing stock. So 37% of the homes in this market were built prior to 1959, an additional 22% during the 60s and 70s. And these older homes represent a potential for them, the future, because, you know, it's good for for Buy Right. So I wanted to give you some perspective on that. But, you know, certainly at times, it gives us a tired look when when you drive into to certain parts of our city. So we certainly have an old housing stock and, you know, not a tremendous amount of our stock was built after the year 2000. So next. And then we also have a quite a high rate of manufactured homes. Almost 20% of our homes are manufactured homes. Next. So here's our total number of housing units, just again, some some interesting stats. Again, occupied housing units with four or more bedrooms in Sunnyside, 19%. Occupied housing units with four or more bedrooms in Washington State, 24. So we're around the average. And then obviously, our this is from the Census Bureau, the makeup of our community, around 17,000. More than 1,400 identify as Hispanic. So roughly 90, around 90%. So that's it. So I, you know, with that being said, I wanted to bring in Damian to to, A, explain a little bit about what he's doing and and some of his analysis already of Sunnyside. And we talked a little bit about pivoting to more of a youth sports program. And then, you know, how he sees the sports program can align with an economic development plan. So if you will, kind of give a Cliff Notes version of who you are in Davis Consulting, too, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. My name's Damian Davis with Davis Consulting. Thank you, Mike, for the invite and thank you, council, for letting me come up here and speak today. Hope to be able to answer any questions you may have. And if not, answer them now, be able to get back to you in a timely manner with those answers. So Mike engaged me a little while back about coming into town and kind of looking over a lot of the different issues, challenges, but also some of the opportunities. Soccer was one of the very first things that were brought up. There was a developer that was involved. And so we started looking into the soccer program. And then we started meeting with the community. We did about three different community meetings in total. And kind of the overwhelming thing that I gathered from those conversations is there is an overarching desire to be able to engage the youth in Sunnyside. That's that's kind of obvious. As we started progressing through and we were going around and touring the town, I noticed quite a few different things. You know, when you're sitting in a room with people who are constituents, you you get a lot of different perspectives on how things are going, which is great. But I was shocked at the level of infrastructure that Sunnyside actually has. And it's underutilization from the community center to the pool to a phenomenally gorgeous building right across the street from City Hall. There are a lot of opportunities, I think, in Sunnyside. When we started working through and and talking with the school district and looking at the indoor facility that potentially could be brought online over by the high school. And we started talking about what Mike's desires were for Sunnyside and trying to stimulate the economic development of this area. Through sport is how the conversation started. And it became quickly apparent that there's just not a lot of connective tissue in Sunnyside. So when we were starting to look and we were thinking about what the plan could look like and we were going to the Y C D A, we were going, talking to the Boys and Girls Club, we were talking with constituents, that really became the glaring sight. We toured the community center, we're walking through this amazing building that is just sitting completely vacant. And my background, I started in the food industry before I got into tech. And I instantly saw potential. Moving to the Tri-Cities area, which is where I live now, it's you can almost kind of take a time machine back and look at things that have already been done in other communities and just institute those same things in some of the more rural communities or smaller communities in eastern Washington. Food trucks, for example, in Pasco were just becoming huge. And so there was a lot of opportunity there with the specialty kitchen that the the city had some foresight to build this 10 million. build this $10 million CDBG funded facility that was sitting vacant. Again, we're able to get the occupancy of that way up. And now we have a bunch of food trucks that are in the Tri-Cities and are, are bringing a lot of different cultural flair to town. So all of this being said, the, the goal, I think, of what a master plan can be for Sunnyside is really the linking tissue that can get everything kind of aligned together. So you have these assets, great. You have the public sentiment, great. There's a desire, I think, with staff to be able to do some of these things. But if you do everything in a silo, you, what you run into is potential redundancy, lack of economic efficiency, and missing the larger possibility of what a larger scope can be. What a long-term master plan really allows you to do is to kind of align all those things. One thing that I've learned from working with cities is they don't move quickly, and that's a good thing. But it takes time to get the snow, you know, the ball rolling. Once it does, you can kind of scoop a lot of different things together and bring them along down the road. So with this community, I just believe that there are so many infrastructural benefits. I think there's a ripe opportunity with the economy and the shift that's happening inside of our valley with a move away from agriculture, or at least a shift in the economy with agriculture still being a major player. But there's a shift happening. And I think that Sunnyside's kind of uniquely positioned to be able to be a great gateway to lots of the different things that are happening in our area. What I believe a master plan would do, like the MyTry2030 master plan that they did for the Visit Tri-Cities area, is it just aligns all the different sectors and allows everybody to kind of march on the same path. And if we are able to accomplish some of those things, I just think the economy in town can be bolstered. And I think you guys could diversify for your constituents through education, through play, that's a big part of it, but also through attracting different kinds of industries to your area. So.
Thanks.
All right, council. Questions for you to the manager, Mr. Davis?
That's what we want. I got, I've been talking that for, how long I've been around?
A while.
A while.
Well, I agree completely that we need a master plan, just 100%. My question about tonight is, it says proposed council action authorize agreement. I'm not seeing an agreement. And I'm not seeing.
That would be premature. And, and I think that was, that was baked in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing signatures or an agreement. So, you know, I, I think we need to move forward with a strategic planning, you know, under, under council's direction and desire. And I, I appreciate Mr. Davis's enthusiasm and knowledge. So.
And, and we're not voting on anything here tonight. We're giving direction to the manager. And so.
Do we want to continue on this?
Do we want to continue in this trajectory? Do we want to see this continue on? And that's kind of what we're trying to get. And, and also the proposal is, do we plan a retreat? I think you've seen that in your packet. And then establish a time when, when we can do that. So.
Yeah. And once again, I'd like to see cost proposals, you know, what's it going to cost? We definitely have to do some sort of a plan, a master plan. But yeah, if, you know, my direction is let's develop the plan of the cost and then, then say whether we want to move forward with it.
Okay. Further questions, Ms. Fausto?
Yeah. And so, I mean, this is music to my ears because I've been screaming for a strategic plan for a very long time. I think no business, education, whatever entity it may be, doesn't move without some sort of direction. And we have to have direction. And we have to actually document it and cement it. And, you know, today, the mayor and the deputy mayor and I were, were having a conversation about Sunnyside, Sunnyside's identity. And, you know, the mayor said something that I think resonated with me, you know, you know, over the course of time, I don't think that Sunnyside has really built in this identity, right? And really built out this identity. And I feel like we have so much potential here in our community. We are surrounded by amazing people, amazing businesses. Counselor Vasquez's small business was just voted best new business in town. And so she's bringing in, yeah. So there's so much vibrance, right? There's so much vision. And I think that cost obviously is important to us, especially during this time. But I think we cannot get somewhere without investing. And that's where we have to start moving our minds and our brains and our bigger vision to, because we do have the potential to become something great. But we have to come together and actually plan where it is we want to go and finally cement what our identity is. So we can, so we can get there. So this is, I'm inspired by this. I'm moved by this. I completely agree. If, if we want to have a, a retreat, I am all for it. I think this is council's, should be council's priority. It is our job to develop policy. We are policymakers, we are movers, and we have to start shaking right with it. So count me in for all of that. I thank you so much for, for being here.
Well, and one thing I would like to reiterate, or kind of bring up, I guess, is the best way to put it. So one thing I'd like to bring up is master plans are living documents. So when you go through this process, don't think of this as something that has a beginning and an end. This is something that becomes a living document that you guys have an opportunity to really put your thumbprints on and take a time of adversity in this, in this economy and use it as an opportunity. I can tell you right now, there's several large industries that have been looking in the Richland area. And one thing that's a very interesting note is Sunnyside is equidistant from Richland to the Hanford site that a lot of these places are going to as Sunnyside. So when you're talking about cost of growth, cost of opportunities, you have these educators in your community and a school district that is very willing. You have new state policy that has been put in that's really focusing on trades. You have affordable land and you have a lot of it to develop. And so these are all positives. So if you take the challenges and just flip the perspective a little bit and see it as an opportunity for growth, I think that's a very valuable position for Sunnyside to be in.
Okay. I think Ms. Vasquez had a question?
Yeah, I guess. So Damian Davis, right? And then what was the name of the consulting?
Davis Consulting.
Davis Consulting. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I have a stack of business cards if anybody would like to get contact.
Okay, Councilor Hart.
One, one of the things that I, I really love the idea of being able to flip this negativity into a positive. And, you know, we, we sit on our hands all the time. And that's how we've gotten to the place we're at, without very much actual positive growth with a purpose. And that's, I think, what this council really wants to do, at least I do, I speak for myself there. I really want to see this, this council be able to work with a purpose, working towards a positivity in our community. We have all the things we need. We just need to figure out how to make it all come together. And I think this group of, of council members are eager to do that. Again, I am speaking for myself, but I also want to hope that that's the, in agreement with the rest of the council as a whole. Well, I just, I'm just excited about this very much.
Well, I work a lot with small businesses, helping them develop, grow. I do a lot of economic development work with different municipalities. And one of the things that is, is kind of crucial in this moment is to realize that the city is not a monolith, right? The city is not something that can do all of this by itself. And one of the things that was heartening to me was we're sitting in these community sessions and we have a room, we're at the fire station. And I think we had probably 45, 50 people in the room. And all of them came up afterwards because I spoke a little bit about this, this master plan in sports and, you know, how we can do this. And there were probably 12 people that volunteered to do stuff. They just didn't know what to do. And that is what I got from that meeting more than anything. And it really kind of was enlightening and heartening to me because you don't see that in all of the communities. And you saw people who just needed some structure and some development. And there's a lot of things that are going to be needed in the community that aren't driven by the city.
Right.
And getting these people who are in your community already, getting them activated and having some structure to allow them to operate and maybe even some direction on where to operate. Now all of a sudden, you can make these heavy lifts much, much easier.
Yeah.
And I think.
Councilor Ripley.
Yes. You came to the Parks and Rec meeting and, and talked about this. And it was 10,000 down. And you've already been, wrote out a check for that. And 35,000 total for?
Yes.
And, and what does that consist of?
Sure. So that one is a, so that's a contract that's already been signed. So that's like a five-phase approach. And so right now we're in phase one where we're kind of norming. So we're trying to go through and decide who are going to be the key stakeholders in the community, setting up town hall meetings, being able to get in front of the community, doing some tabling efforts, gathering feedback at this point. So there'll be a report as a conclusion of, of phase one. Phase two is starting to look at the city's infrastructure and getting a determination and a report so that everybody can understand what the challenges are ahead, what the opportunities are, and what some realistic costs might be on what it would take to identify, say, of the, you know, ten parks that we want to look at, how many of those are going to be ready to be able to be used right away? And what is cost to get those up and running? What are the long-term costs? What are the strategic costs that the city needs to start budgeting for? Those are things that'll come out of phase two and three a little bit. Phase three is going to be more of the sourcing of revenue opportunities from outside to come in and help fund these things. So grants, tax dollars, small foundation dollars, things along those lines. Phase four is going to be some, working with the city staff to be able to do some renderings and get down into the nitty gritty a little bit more of infrastructure and improvements. There's also a funding component that would happen at that phase as well. And then phase five is the deliverable. So that's going to be kind of a visual representation of what this can look like, what I believe the economic benefits or challenges may be to accomplish that feasibility study, for lack of better term. That'll all be the outcome of that. So the goal is, once we get through phase five, that there will also be some funding dollars that have been received at that point, so that there is an action plan and some marching orders to move forward. Yep.
And I did want to mention that it was out of the REIT one fund, so that it's not coming out of the general fund, so that everybody out there knows that.
All right. Further questions or comments? All right. Well, that was great information and I appreciate that. Obviously, you've started doing an awful lot of work. You've been earning your keep around here and that's, that's excellent to see. I look forward to the full report. Council, we need to, I, I sensed some enthusiasm for a retreat on strategic planning. And that's not just going to be on athletic facilities, but on, on the whole package. And you've seen some sample agendas. What I would like to do is get our clerk or the manager to send out a selection of different dates and we can rank those and pick the ones that are going to work the best for us. I was suggesting to the manager that we do that sometime in July, but I don't know if that's going to work for the rest of council. That's just on my schedule. That's going to work great. June is going to be a little limited for me, but go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Are we thinking like a Saturday?
That's kind of the idea. If you look at the agenda, the tentative agenda that he proposed, it's from 9:00 AM to 4:00. So that, that would require a full day.
Yeah, that would probably work better.
And Saturday's going to work best for?
July.
I was thinking July, but that's again, that's a council decision. It's not a me decision.
I think that's really.
Calendar.
Yeah, I was just looking at.
Well, and early June was also another option for the gentleman.
I would see, because we have to remember, then we have the budget.
Right. Yeah, that, that I was just thinking that because.
I would rather see it in early June.
Well, for me, what's available is June 7th or June 28th.
You know?
What was that again?
June 7th or June 28th.
Is that in Tri-Cities?
Yes. Grant, grant, graduation on the 6th, physical graduation.
I'm sure.
Not that we need to worry about that unless we got kids.
Got to look on my phone.
The 27th?
28th.
Did I?
Well, what does the 28th look like for most folks?
She's checking the AWC.
Oh, that's right.
That will usually be about the 23rd.
It's not on Saturday, though.
No, it's, it ends on Friday at noon.
On Saturday. Yeah.
Where is it at this year? Oh, see, it's easy. That's easy.
So the 28th?
I think it's 28th. You guys will be.
I, I could do the 20. I think.
I think we should do June 28th.
I'm out of town. I don't know. I have to check.
28th.
Maybe the, that we can have the same as you have the just the clerk.
Even 24th through 27th, say AWC conference.
Okay.
23, no, 24th through 27th. Is that right?
Yes.
For that days.
All right. Well, I have that.
I put it in my calendar already.
Tendably scheduled for the 28th. If that changes, we can always reschedule. But I think this is an important event. I think it's, you know, we talk about doing some strategic planning and here we have the opportunity to get into it. And I think we need to jump on it while the enthusiasm is there. Mr. Davis can do his work and I'm sure that will bring us an awful lot of information to work with at that retreat. And so I think this can be a good step. I like the comment. I agree. It is a living document. It is not something that's done and put on a shelf. It's something that we have to continue to develop. It's something that we have to continue to work with. And we get partway down and we might see that the situation changes a little bit. We might have to take a slightly different direction. But that can happen. The whole idea is that we've got a destination in mind and we're moving forward.
Yep.
Will the strategic plan be with Mr. Davis or just this?
It doesn't necessarily have to. Mr. Davis was nice enough to, you know, sort of be the guide wire for tonight. You know, so there, there's different options, obviously. He's funded out of REIT for this particular project because it ties to, you know, part of our CIP and our parks plan. So that's, that's how we were able to fund that. You know, certainly something like this would have to come out of a general fund, which it's an investment, but well worth it. I've been a part of several at the city of Pasco, at Franklin County. We also did a, a strategic plan on our revenues and our expenditures. So, you know, and, and it can vary on, on the spending amounts. So my homework council is to go back, give you some options in terms of variables and, and what we want to get out of it. And, and another thing I want to get out there too, it's, it's going to be a cohesive effort between the port, the school district, stakeholders, you know, it's, it's not going to be us driving the bus because, because as Damian mentioned, we can't do it all ourselves. And, and, and perhaps the port can help fund us. And perhaps the school district can help fund this because they're a huge part of our economy. They're a huge part of the educational attainment. And, and they're a huge part of the fabric. So I will be contacting Ryan Maxwell tomorrow and I'll be contacting Lucia, you know, to really get on board. And, and I have no doubts that they will because, you know, the enthusiasm that I'm hearing and, you know, having been a part of several of these, it's, it's, it really brings the community to get together, you know, it gives the council opportunity to put their stamp on something, you know, that, that lives. And, you know, as Mr. Davis mentioned, you know, there, there's also, the thing I like about master plans, it also identifies funding mechanisms, you know, for grant opportunities. So it's not as if, you know, someone like Mr. Davis puts together the plan and goes, here you go. I mean, it's, he's looking for, whoever winds up doing it is looking for those funding mechanisms.
Well, and the one thing that I really wanted to bring back up again is I look forward to working with each and every one of you because even master planning down the road or this youth sports program, I intend to meet with each and every one of you. So I can gather your feedback and bring it back to the Parks Commission as well, so that we can come to a cohesive approach. So what I like to tell people is this is an opportunity to do the, the larger scale concept with training wheels. So when you're, when you're thinking about this youth sports thing, it does not necessarily have to be done, removed. This can be used as a gateway to get you guys thinking in these terms and rolling it up. So you can see a proof of concept in small scale before you go to a large scale. So.
Perfect. Ms. Hart?
Just one thing, I just wanted to know too, if we do this, we do a retreat, we look at our strategic plan, then later we're going to be working on our, working on our budget. As we, as we're working on our budget, keeping our strategic plan in mind as we move forward. I think that'll help us a great deal in this whole process.
Here's that. Yep. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's exciting.
Next item. It seems like we've been here forever. We're on item C of the agenda. Tort claims and claims for damages. Approve a resolution designating the city clerk as the agent to receive tort claims and claims for damages and authorizing the city manager to act in the clerk's absence. Mr. City Manager?
You know, I'll toss it to Jackie. This is her item. So.
Adam, City Clerk?
This item is just cleaning up the previous resolution that was adopted. It had the actual city clerk's name and we just removed that. So it's just general city clerk. And we also added the tort claims as well. And then if I am not in that day, then the city manager can accept it as well. So that's what this resolution just cleans up.
Okay. Council, questions for the clerk?
Sounds good.
It says in there that manager or designate city clerk or designate. And so I just want to know, you know, the, the resolution has to say something. So, you know, but I want to make sure, much like the flock camera, that when something like that comes in, there's that when something like that comes in, there's, you know, if we're having designees, that they need to be aware of their responsibility if a tort claim or something like that comes in, that it gets to the proper authorities as soon as possible.
Yes, and normally if I'm going to be out, I'll designate, say, hey, Mike, I'm going to be out. Can you accept these? Or I'll let the ladies up front know as well with records requests with these tort claims or claims for damages. Yep.
Further questions? Hearing none. What is the desire, Council?
I move to approve the resolution designating the city clerk as agent to receive tort claims and claims for damages and authorizing the city manager to act in the clerk's absence.
All second.
All right, we got a motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Vasquez. Thank you for reading the motion into the record, Ms. Hart. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
I too vote yes. Motion passes. All right, Item D, Municipal Clerks Week. Approval of resolution proclaiming May four through ten, twenty-twenty-five, is Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Sunnyside, Washington. We have before us a proclamation needing to be approved by council to declare that, and so I need direction from council on this one. Is there comments on this?
Let's do it.
I just want to thank, you know, Jackie and now our new deputy city clerk for, you know, hanging in there, doing an awesome job, and, you know, you guys are the best. You guys are the glue to the city, so thank you.
Well, y'all are the best.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And with that being said, Jackie also received an award, so just congratulations and well-deserved.
Yes.
Lucia Award.
Trying to get some, a chain or something she can wear around her back. No, our clerk has done a phenomenal job in the last few years. As long as she's been sitting in that chair, she has done an absolutely amazing job. I can find no complaint against her whatsoever. She's always been very timely with getting things done. And I don't know how you do it, but you always show up with a great attitude, and there's always a smile on your face when I walk in the door. I don't know what it is when I leave. You know, it's just been amazing working with you, and so I believe you deserve the honor. And Emily, I have every bit of hope for you in the future, and my brief contacts with you, I think that you also are very well-suited to this position, so I think it's excellent to be able to honor the two of you. So I need a, what is the desire, Council, on this issue?
Move to approve.
A second.
All right, we got a motion by Counselor Vasquez, second by Deputy Mayor, to approve the resolution proclaiming May four through ten in twenty-twenty-five as Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Sunnyside. For the vote, Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
I'm thinking about it. No, yes.
No or yes?
Yes.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
I too vote yes. Motion passes. With that, then I shall read the proclamation into the record. City of Sunnyside, Washington proclamation, whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all while serving as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administrative, administration of the affairs through participation in education, programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore, I Dean Burisma, Mayor of the city of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May four through ten, twenty-twenty-five, as Municipal Clerks Week, and I further extend appreciation to municipal clerks past and present for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at the city of Sunnyside this twenty-eighth day of April in the year twenty-twenty-five.
Hooray!
Go, check in, Emily.
There's three of these. I sold only two.
Should we take a picture? I feel like they're always taking pictures of us.
I want to take a picture of her with her award. Where's your award? You didn't bring it with you?
Bring it for May, somewhere be May fourth and tenth when we do, when it is the week and we want a picture with it.
Awesome.
I'll make sure. Hey, thank you.
You take care of it, Amanda. That's our girl.
Emily.
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 Emily, where'd I get Amanda?
I'm not sure.
It's all right, Emily.
Emily, Emily, I should remember that. I have a nice.
She still struggles with my name, too.
Yep, there you go.
I still love you, though.
Item E, IT Department update. City offices internet outage. Receive an update from the IT department regarding the recent internet outage affecting city offices, including the cause of the disruption, steps taken to restore service, and any measures being implemented to prevent future occurrences. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So obviously, our internet and email was out last week for, I think it was four days, due to a fire out in Wapato, so I've learned quite a bit about fiber and, you know, how that works. But I wanted to give the council an update and the public to let you know, you know, we've been diligently working on it. Jafet Silva, our IT manager, has been doing a great job, just, you know, looking at different options, so that's how I teed up, Mayor.
All right, Jafet.
So as the city manager mentioned, there was a fire out in Wapato that cut a fiber, belongs to Yakima County. Yakima County is our internet service provider, along with a couple other services we get from them. And that, the loss of the internet really is what affected us the most here in Sunnyside. Our email server depends on that internet connection to work, so once we lost internet, there was no mail making it in or out. This outage was a little unique in that the county was ready to repair it the same day, but they were not allowed to because of a pending investigation. So really, the length of the outage was only because the county was not allowed to make repairs. Once they were cleared to go in the area and start work, it was back up and running. I think they started work Thursday morning. By lunch, about twelve-thirty that day, the services all were back up. So this helped us identify some weaknesses that we have in our services. And I think the biggest thing is that we have several services that depend on a single connection. Once that goes down, there's no internet, so our, you know, regular work that happens over the internet can't happen. Our email service cut off, there's no communication, and we have a couple other stuff that county does for the police department that, you know, we lose access to. So things I think we can do to avoid that in the future is get a backup internet service provider. We have been looking at this. I've reached out to a few companies and requested quotes and, you know, looking at different scenarios and how to make that all work. I've also brought in somebody to help with a design, you know, how we actually accomplish that, you know, because it's, it's not as simple as saying, oh, well, you know, we plug, unplug one cable and plug in the other, you know, it all has to stay running. So that's, that's one, I think, that the most solution we can get going the fastest. We also have to really consider moving our email service to the cloud. I think that would have helped us a lot in this situation, because we would have been able to have access to email with just any internet connection, not just the city's internet connection, just on our cell phone, you know. Everybody has email on their cell phones, and had we had a cloud service, we would have been able to communicate via email and not lost that. So that's something I'm also looking into. With the, there's, there's, what's held it up in the back, in the past, sorry, is there is going to be a price increase for, for that type of licensing, Microsoft licensing. So we're trying to, you know, clean up the accounts that we can to minimize what that price increase will be. And those two things, I think, are what we can do to minimize the impacts of a, an outage in the future.
Council, questions? Deputy Mayor?
Have, have we had any other outages that you remember? I'm not sure how long you've been in the city, but.
The last one I remember, I think, was about a year or a little bit over a year ago. That one was another unique situation because the fiber got cut going over the freeway. So you can't just run in and, you know, repair the cable. You have to stop traffic across the freeway. So, yeah, there's, there's been outages in the past. I will say that since we went to Yakima County, it has been a better situation than there was prior. With other service providers, we just, we had constant outages. When I was here prior, I don't know, like, ten years ago, that service, we had to go out every other month, you know, to where people just got used to, oh, you know, another outage.
Yeah.
So it is an improvement, but you know, like I said, this, this helps us identify that we can still do, you know, something better than what we have now.
Other questions?
Comment, just thanks for taking care of it.
Thank you.
Trying to, trying to keep us surprised of the situation.
Yes, thank you. I can't, I don't even want to imagine the stress you were under.
A national week or something for IT, just for IT. Just for Jafet.
We can't actually proclaim it anytime we want.
Let's do that.
We are the city council.
We can do it.
We want an IT week, we can do it. No, honestly, sir, we do appreciate the effort that you put in, and we know that you put in a lot of time, and I know you were able to get some hotspots going and get certain computers up and running, and you kept the police dispatch functioning and and all of those important things, and so I appreciate the time and effort that you put into that. I don't think we can actually appreciate the amount of time and struggle you went through to get that all done, so.
May just, quick, quick. Once you have all these numbers, will you come back to council and present the options?
So I want to, you know, filter, filter through the options and see which ones are, you know, more feasible, prices, and then present that.
Because you haven't been busy.
Look forward to hearing that.
All right, well, thank you for your report, and again, appreciation for all that you've done. That was, that was really good. Item nine, items from council members. Mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. The Rules Committee met today, but we did not consider any names for boards and commissions. We had other agenda items, which I'll talk to, I'll talk about in a minute. Again, we do have some vacancies, and we do have names to consider in upcoming meetings. But if you know of anybody who's interested in serving on those positions, and I believe, Madam Clerk, those are available on our website, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if you want to serve, and I encourage people to do that, you learn an awful lot about our city by serving on boards and commissions. Most of the stuff is stuff you want to know. Every once in a while, you learn some stuff that you didn't really want to know, but most of the time, it's pretty positive stuff. We live in a pretty good town. All right, council request status report. Council members, this is back. It's not a new item. It's back. We pulled this off probably a year ago because most of the stuff that had been on it had been dealt with. We were in the midst of a city manager search, and we had a lot on our plates at that time, and so we took this off. The council request status report is a report where council members raise a concern, and it can be anything from public works to finance to whatever. And we would like to get a report. Every once in a while, council in the past felt that the concerns that they had had fallen off the radar. Staff is busy. They've got a lot on their plate. So we can put it on the status report, and it'll be assigned to a staff member. For example, I'm picking on the fire chief right now, but there's something with the fire department. It's assigned to the fire chief. He's going to come back at a specific date and bring us a report. And every once in a while, the staff member will say, I didn't have time to do it. Can I do it at the next meeting? We'll move it on. But we try to get that question satisfied. Then it comes off of the report once that has been satisfied. But we can bring something to, we can bring our concerns to staff, and they can take some time to deal with that. So this is back. It's not a new item. This was something that was brought up as a desire of council during the meeting where we had the executive session for the city manager's evaluation. So I got right to it the next day and made sure it got back on the agenda, so, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
How do we add stuff to it?
All right, we add stuff by saying, I would like to add something to the council request status report, and that's where I am here right now. Is there any items? Because it's blank right now. Jackie just put up an empty sheet for us, and so is there any items that a council member would like to add to the council request status report? And I see at the far end, Ms. Hancock has her hand up, so.
I've got three. The dog breeding ordinance, the Fourth of July, and and I talked to Cus about this, the Yellowstone Road, that thing has sat there for ten years, and it's, it's an eyesore, and it needs to be dealt with. There's, there's construction blocks or whatever you call them, barriers, Jersey barriers or whatever, and just needs to be dealt with. That's an eyesore in that neighborhood. And it is my neighborhood, but it's also my district, so, and then, you know, I've waited ten years.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go.
Counsel, your request on Fourth of July, I'm assuming that's pertaining to fireworks? Okay, so if I, my provider just, it would be on the agenda for the twenty-sixth meeting by bringing the ordinance to be voted on and reviewed at that date.
Thank you.
Okay, so would you like, would you like to leave that on the request report, or are you okay with it being on the agenda?
I'd prefer it's on the agenda.
Well, obviously, it's going to be on the agenda, so.
So that doesn't need to be on the.
Okay, so we can remove that from it.
I kind of would like to see it on there, because in addition to the ordinance, I think that there's been some confusion in the community about how it's, how it's applied and that sort of thing. I'm not sure if that's all what, what Ms. Hancock is talking about as well. But I think we'd like to leave it on there till we're sure that we've got all our questions answered.
All right.
I just, I just, yeah, thank you. Well, that's good to know.
Thank you.
That's why we need this, as we.
Okay, Ms. Vasquez?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if this is something we could add, but I know the animal control, the last time we had the forum, there's been a lot of people asking how much of Sunnyside regarding like the follow-up or what are the next steps. So maybe that's something that we can, like, tackle.
Yeah, that's something we're going to put on our next workshop, and I'm going to, I'm going to reach out to some stakeholders that are pretty involved in the process, so.
And then what I would like to add on there is the follow-up regarding the parking in front of Rigel.
And that is going to be on our next workshop. That's already teed up, so we're ready to go. And Cus has been working on a plan, and, and something that I did want to, because this coming back stoked some discussion and for me and clarification for staff, so the intent of this and for the public out there watching is, is not to ask questions in this, because, because we were wondering the redundancy, because in Item C is asking questions by council. So do we, are we keeping this just, you know, what, what you'd like us to find out in the future? So it's not, it's not a form for like, hey, what's going on? And then, because this is my first go-around with this.
So, you know, this is today's meeting date, and then there's anticipated completion date, so we're going to say, can you get us a report by, let's say, for example, on the Fourth of July, we know that it's going to be May twenty-six. So.
The fire department, what department?
Then it'd be the fire department's going to be the one who's in charge of it, and so that's how, so we'll know which department head to talk to, you know, to get the, to get the questions answered, or the manager will know which department head to talk to to be able to bring that report to council.
So. And sometimes some of these things that we want to put on this status report are things that we know we've been working on, but we kind of lost track of.
Okay.
So that's more.
It's it's different than reports and announcements and questions. I mean, reports and announcement, hey, I went to a meeting, and this is what we discussed. Whereas this is a concern of mine. Well, dog breeding is a concern, but what can we what can we report? Do we need to come up with a municipal code that deals with that? Or how are we going to handle that? So recommendation from staff on that.
More so, Dean, I read in the meeting minutes, I wasn't here when you guys did that, but reading through the meeting minutes, I saw where this was asked to be brought back by council in early April. So that's why I asked for that to be put up there, not inventing anything new. It's just that council had already asked for that to be done.
The status report?
No.
Dog breeding.
Dog breeding.
Oh, actually, I asked about it today, actually.
I just threw that out there as an example. You are absolutely right. Okay, so, Ms. Ripley, have you got anything that you'd like to add? No, Ms. Frosto.
Uh, no, I think I'm okay.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so I know at the previous meeting, Mr. City Manager, you said you were going to bring back the discussion about the various vendors around town. I really think it's it's important that we discuss it. I was hoping it was going to be this at this meeting that we do. But I really, really think that we need to back up our the businesses that actually went through the time and and effort in getting a business license and getting somewhere to, you know, to do business as opposed to, you know, just some random vendor popping up. I really need I really think that we need to have that discussion.
And if I understood right, can I just pop in there on that vendors thing? I think one of the things I was thinking that you were asking about was a lot of these are already or ought to be regulated by Yakima County Health Department. And there was another, and, you know, making sure they have the city license, temporary licensing.
Well, we have SMCs that are in place right now and just need to be followed.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I I agree with that's a good one. We need to really, because I know there's a lot out there that says, well, I had to go through all these different hoops. Now, how are these? And basically, the question is, are these people doing the same hoops?
Right, and and we'll get you some more information.
That's kind of.
They're definitely out there. The the question, there's definitely a process that they have to follow. There's a there's a license they have to get. You know, I'd have to get clarity on where they can congregate. You know, I have seen some some communities that I've worked in, you know, those those turn into hot button issues when we when we set a code enforcement person there to give a ticket or or remove them. You know, social media, you know, it can really skew what what's happening, so.
So you got to be careful with that.
Yeah.
And I'd like to add something too, you know, like I'm all for supporting businesses, all types of businesses. But when it comes to food, like Department of Health, like everyone must have a food handler's card, must have the correct training. And then if it's going to be like a one time thing or every weekend thing, then a temporary vendor, a temporary vendor application is needed. Kind of like for Cinco de Mayo, all the vendors, they don't, a lot of them, they just need to kind of go with the process. That way, they are they know and are knowledgeable with the process of how to wash your hands, how to wash everything correctly. So I feel like that's where the big issue would be, is for us to also care about our community enough to make sure that they're also eating things that are prepared correctly.
I totally agree.
Yeah, a lot of these vendors are monolingual speakers. And I know that, you know, we've been in conversation about how do we do outreach with monolingual, Spanish speaking, community members that want to start their business? So maybe we can, you know, we just talked about taking the negative and turning it into a positive. Could we take this opportunity to maybe talk to them and say, hey, you know, you qualify for a temporary permit, this is how you can get it. Like, I'm council member X, right? And you can come into City Hall and and we can help you, you know, kind of go about it. So because, I mean, I I agree with you. I I think we live within the confinements of capitalism, and everybody's just trying to make a living and trying to put food on the table. And so so it I think it'll be important to try to approach this in the most empathetic way that we can.
And I think that's why this this status report is a really good thing because if we we get a lot of stuff in front of us. And and so I think that's all of those are good, good, good questions for us to.
Okay, well, good discussion, and it's on there. So, and Ms. Hart, do you have anything you'd like to you'd like to add to this?
Well, I'm I'm just I'm working on, I'm I think the Fourth of July thing is it was one I wanted to see up there, and I think we're good with that. But this is a good start, and there may be others. Can we contact you?
They will be on the agenda every meeting going forward, so.
So we can add to.
We're going to get to this part of the agenda every meeting going forward, and Jackie will faithfully add whatever we ask her to.
Thank you.
All right, and I have nothing to add to it, so let's.
Move on.
Move on to other reports, announcements, and or questions by council.
Mayor, we've reached our three hour limit.
Yes, we have, but does that include the executive session, or are we okay?
It's your rules of procedure, so I would say yes, it includes your executive session, but it's up to.
All right.
How quickly can we wrap this up?
Well, it's other reports, announcements, and or questions by council that's left in upcoming council meetings and the city manager reports.
Those are.
Those those could go pretty.
Pretty fast.
So do we want to ask, do we, I mean, this, we can continue, but it has to be consent by council, has to be voted on. Is council okay with adding another 30 minutes to the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so by consent, no objection, we're going to add another 30 minutes to our meeting. Sorry to staff, they'd have to keep you here this much longer. All right, other reports, announcements, and or questions by council. Counselor Hancock.
Yeah, I attended the float unveiling for the Miss Sunnyside float, and they've done a wonderful job. I went to the Spirit of Sunnyside banquet. And again, that was a very good community event. I have a list of things I, as a as a counselor that hasn't been here when some of these contracts and stuff have been signed, I would like to, I have a list of things I would like to receive. They're all things, I'm not looking for anything. I am looking to know what what we're doing as we go forward. We're approving vouchers and all that kind of stuff. I feel like I can't do it if I don't have the information I need. So, Mr. City Manager, would you like me to email them to you? Most of them have to do with finance, so.
Sure, and you can see Kelly on there as well. That'd be great.
So I will send those, and they're just so, I'm going to go through it really quick, but I will see, email it so you don't have to try to write it down. I want the updated budget that includes all non-budgeted expenditures and to date, and the contracts, employee contracts, stipends, and what new employee positions we've added. And I'd like to get a copy for my information about the classifications and pay scale grade as approved in the budget. I'm not looking at any one person or anything else, it's for my information. And I would like to see the contract with Menke Jackson. And we have a contract with a lobbyist named John Colton. I would like to see the contract with the soccer group, just so I know what's going on. And then our vehicle policy. And I'll email that to you.
All right, Counselor Vasquez.
Yes, so I'll start with the first one. I actually attended the Noon Rotary, and they are doing a lot because of Cinco de Mayo coming up this weekend. And they are actually in need of some volunteers. So if you or someone are in need of some community service hours, this is a perfect time to volunteer. And just reach out to Noon Rotary, you guys can search them on Facebook, and just send them a message, and they'll be more than happy that you headed their way. Number two would be, I also attended the Finance Subcommittee, and I just want to thank Kelly for the time that she took, her and City Manager Mike for just kind of getting all the information given to us that we needed for maybe something new that's that we will be applying here soon. Number three would be, I also attended Spirit of Sunnyside event. It was a really great event. A lot of people donated, and they, it was all really fun. The food was good. I think that's what I wanted to say, the food was really good. Or maybe I was just hungry because I didn't eat at all that day. Number four would be, I also want to take a moment to thank our mayor for nominating us for the USC Speaker Mind Ice Bucket Challenge. And I just want to say thank you for not saying 24 hours because there's no way I would have been able to do that within that day. I'm trying to make some time to take that challenge up and do it myself. So I will be doing it, so I'm excited. And that would be it for me.
Counselor Ripley.
Hey, I'm not going to take the challenge. No, no, I got back problems, and that cold ice on my head will just jolt that back out of place.
And I have something else, actually.
Okay, go for it.
I forgot, so there's a new event going on, so Cinco de Mayo this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And Dana Smith, and I believe with the, what's the Children's Events Committee? Sunnyside Events Committee, they are creating a new event this weekend. So it's going to be called Cinco de Mayo Chalk Art Event. It's gonna be from eight in the morning to 10:00, May 1st and the 3rd. So it's gonna, there's going to be free food, free drinks, and it's going to be open to all ages. So I wanted to extend an invitation to all of our community. It's going to be called Cinco de Mayo Chalk Art Event. The rules are, if you want to bring your own chalk, please confirm with the volunteers that it's washable. Design should be in the theme of Hispanic culture. Please no politics, please no gang graffiti, keep all art within restricted area, use washable chalk only, no other medium. If needed, please ask for more materials. But they will also be providing chalk for the families. So this is going to be something new and exciting. I'm excited to see the creativeness, the everything, the designs that the kids are going to be doing this weekend. So everyone is welcome, it's free, everything is going to be free. So make sure to attend, and let's support all the volunteers who will be there since 7:00 in the morning. So it'll be starting at 8:00.
Sounds like fun.
May 1st and 3rd, from 8:00 in the morning to 10:00. So 10:00, 8:00. So it's going to be two hours. So they'll be they'll be designing and coloring up the streets with chalk to make it look more appealing for.
Cool. Counselor Ripley, did you have more?
Yeah, I went to the Spirit of Sunnyside, that was awesome. Congratulations on everybody who won. And I went to the float unveiling of the Princess and Princesses. And we had a Parks and Rec meeting, and that was with Damian. He was there, we talked about the soccer. And I went to the Finance Subcommittee, and I got a whole page of stuff on it. I'm trying to make this quick. And I also want to put a forensic audit on the agenda for our next meeting.
Can do that. Discussion, I'm assuming, not doing the audit.
Discussion.
Okay. All right, Counselor Frosto.
Yeah, you know, I have no updates, just very quickly, because it just occurred to me. And I'm I'm gonna, I'm just gonna pitch it for discussion. For our retreat, considering the budget, Kelly and my fellow council members, how feasible would it be to maybe talk to Damian or a consultant to facilitate that strategic meeting? I feel that the outcome is only as good as the facilitation in the in this room and in the space during that given time. If it's not within our budget, totally understand, but I at least wanted to to bring it up.
Would be definitely worth a worth a conversation, for sure.
Have somebody else from, yeah.
All right, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor has a call.
Spirit of Sunnyside, congratulations to everybody, Jackie, everybody that that won, and, you know, a few of the city employees weren't there, but congratulations to them. Finance Subcommittee, pertaining a software, potential software, you know, we could be seen, should be presented to council, and we could all decide as a as a group. I had a question. A few months ago, we had a document, Mr. Mayor, where we removed the previous Finance Director. Is that document going to come now again before us so we can add Kelly? Remove the remove Debbie, previous?
Clerk says yes. Kelly?
So that is in my pile and list of things to do. Part of my time I've spent getting access to all of the different accounts that I needed. And so that is in the works with the bank already.
Gotcha, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it came before us.
Yeah, no, the goal is to have that before us, I think, before the next regular meeting, right? That's a couple of weeks away.
And that's all I got.
All right, Counselor Hart.
One of the things that I've been asking for, and I hope to see it at some point. I know the Finance Committee, there's several people who spoke about it this evening. One of the things that I think that we really need to have at each meeting, I noticed tonight, we didn't have on our consent agenda the usual list of, you know, the expenses and all of that stuff. We didn't have a copy of that. The other thing is, I don't know why, I don't know why we made a change, so it's not on there. Did we make a change, a request to not have it on there anymore?
We did not, no, this is.
So that was actually an item. When I met with the Finance Subcommittee, the information that you're receiving currently is very disjointed. It's in chunks and pieces, and none of it really flows together very well. So I talked to the Finance Subcommittee about having reports that are not as just disjointed, that have things that are in easily understandable format for you. And not knowing the software system immediately, I knew it would take me a few days to figure that out. And I did want to pass that by the Subcommittee before we actually implemented that change for their input.
So that would have been good to know this evening. Because the other thing that I'm really hoping that we can get back to having, at least maybe if it's quarterly, we're past quarterly right now. But as soon as as soon as it's feasible to have a regular report that's included, this just gives us a picture, an overall picture of what's in the general fund, are we on track for the general fund and all the other accounts, you know? And where are we at to make it to the end of the year? Do you understand what I'm asking for?
I do. I believe what you're asking for is called an income statement. I've already figured out how to create that out of Springbrook, presented a sample of it to the directors that are meeting this morning. And that's typically something that should be at the council once a month because of the way that things do flow through finance. A monthly basis is typically what you'll see just because that way all of your prior period and your prior month is closed so that those numbers are solid and correct.
That's that's what I would very much like to see.
Absolutely.
And I think that that'd be very good for those of us who aren't on the Finance Committee to take a look at, you know, as well.
I think it'd be very helpful.
Yes, thank you. The other thing that I have is that the YVCOG General Membership Meeting is coming up, May the 21st. For those of us who are going to that, it will be in, shoot ahead at a minute ago.
It's in Union Gap.
Union Gap at the Tannum Park or at the library. Aha, I mean, look, you guys forgot.
Library.
Library.
Library, but anyway.
On the Tannum Road, there you go.
Okay, well, that was where the Tannum, that was where I was thinking. But those are the two items I had on on my.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. I had a couple. First of all, like my colleagues, I went to the Spirit of Sunnyside Awards and enjoyed it immensely. People who put that on every single year do an amazing job, and it was a great time to be there, just hanging out with people and seeing the awards. Everybody who won an award very much deserved it. And it was just good to see those folks, you know, getting the award. Some of them were totally surprised and absolutely speechless at the end of it, which was, you know, it was it was worth seeing that, it was worth being there. Plus, you know, you can spend over $100 to get a dozen cookies, it was easily worthwhile. But, yeah, we ate well, and it was it was just a great time. The second one is the Rules Committee met, and we talked an awful lot about the Housing Authority. We do have a vacancy on the board there, and we're considering applications for that. We're trying to get the whole sequence of events and paper trail cleaned up to make sure that we totally understand it before we make an appointment. Our original goal was to have that vacancy filled by the beginning of May, but we decided we're going to push that back and get some more information in order to do, have a more thorough understanding of of how to do things correctly and making sure that we've got all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, as they say. So that's going to be a process that's going to take. So that's going to be a process. It's gonna take a couple of more steps perhaps, but we're gonna get that done and get that vacancy filled. They still have a quorum in their board, so they're able to meet. So we're not rendering them helpless. Also, this weekend coming up, Cinco de Mayo, I encourage everybody to be there, participate, enjoy. As always, there's gonna be phenomenal food, music, parade, all kinds of stuff to do. And it is always a fun event, and it's great, family fun. I love especially walking down the, the streets and seeing all the vendors and smelling all the food. I think I gain weight as I walk down the street, and I don't even have to stop to eat. But I do have my favorite vendors, and I look forward to seeing them, so it's a great event. So that's something that we can be proud of. And then I do want to thank council for indulging me. I know I used my platform as a mayor for the Ice Bucket Challenge, even though it was me personally. It was a cause that was very important to me. I have friends and acquaintances who have lost loved ones due to mental health issues and taking the ultimate solution there, and that's, the difficulty and the hardship that's brought on their family is just overwhelming. And so I wanted to take a stand and draw some attention to that, raise some money for it, but also draw attention to the need to get help when you need help. When you're feeling that kind of stressed, you need help, and there's gotta be somebody there for you. This is something that's really important to me, and so I thank you, council, for not taking offense at me using city facilities to have ice and water dumped all over me, and for some of you accepting the challenge. I understand not everybody is able to do that. Ice water on your head at certain times is not a great feeling. And so I appreciate your responses to that, and those of you who've decided to take the challenge, I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I don't think they're gonna turn you down if it's been longer than 24 hours. It's, you know, they're there to raise money and, and get attention, so thank you for that. And with that, we'll move on to the next upcoming council meetings, and Madam City Clerk?
So our next meeting is May 5th. It's a study session. You'll be receiving a presentation regarding Law Day from Court Administrator Vanessa Enquist, and we'll be discussing various intersections, including the one at Virital, and discussion on Youth Advisory Board, and discussing a forensic audit and animal control. We, the next one is May 12th, which is a regular meeting, and you can see the items there. I did want to quickly ask, on June 28th, we, I just put the start time at nine, and do you want that at one of our facilities, or are you looking for like snipes or something like that? So I can ask to see if the community center is available. What are, what are you guys thinking?
I think, you know, we've done both in the past, and I think we can leave that to City Manager's discretion on that and see if you want to go to a different facility. Maybe you can work with staff members to come up with some ideas, or we can use city facilities. What's council's feeling on that?
Well, if there's, I'd just as soon use the community center or something like that if, if there's a cost to doing it as snipes, where I, I can eat pizza and we can order it in. I don't think we need to spend a lot of money to do it. I think we can do it without spending a lot of money.
We found out the basement in the City Hall is quite large.
And there's quite a number of steps down there, too.
Yeah, that's.
Why was?
Considerate of that.
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking, just here?
We can, we can do it here. Absolutely.
And the date is correct, June 28th, not July 28th?
June 28th.
June 28th.
Okay, perfect. Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
Great. City Manager Reports, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll try to be brief. Chalk Art Event, really excited about that, so how that came to fruition. A young man named Jaime Sacedo approached me and said, hey, I want to put on a chalk art event. I'm an art student, and Dana graciously picked up the ball because she's amazing. And I said, Dana, you gotta help me out with this. I don't have time, but I, I want to see this happen. So Sunny Side Events Committee stepped up, you know, just, that's how our community works. So I was just super excited. We could facilitate Jaime and, and watch this young man take the ball and run. Just reminds me, I agreed to donate water and snacks, so I got a good reminder. I'm gonna make myself a note. So I'm really excited to see this thing come together, so thanks for mentioning that, Councilwoman. Marketing of Cinco de Mayo, really encouraging everybody to come out. Jacqueline has really taken the ball with Emily and, and done a great job marketing. You know, some of the videos that Yes Wasco is producing, getting thousands of hits, and, you know, so I just feel like we've taken our marketing to the next level with the Altech dollars that council has, has entrusted me to spend, and, you know, just been really great to see what these women are doing to, to really help out, market our city, and, and what staff is doing from police to fire to public works. Really thanking just a team effort to, to make this happen. Really, I, I think I screamed when I heard the capital budget. We got that 1.3 million in grant funding. And, you know, Councilwoman Hancock mentioned Colton Consulting. We, we made an investment with them, and they paid off big. I mean, it was, I, I knew that was gonna be an investment, but, you know, you, you, sometimes you gotta make the investment to get big gains, and we're starting to step up. You know, we're starting to do the things to make our city better, so just was kudos to them. And, and then really big thank you to Representative Mendoza, Manjares, Senator King, Senator Torres, and, and all the senators and, and representatives from our district, because they stepped up big time for us and battled for us. And thank you to the counselors who, you know, invested their time. I mean, our three counselors that went with us to Olympia were just rock stars, and it was just.
City Manager, can you, can you speak into the record what our investment got us?
Yeah, so, so it got us 1.3 million in total, so we'll have $515,000 to fix Tina North Park Soccer Field, to really upgrade that, that facility. $515,000 to upgrade the infrastructure of our pool, then nearly $300,000 to upgrade our gazebo area for future events like farmers' markets and, and our Cinco de Mayo Festival. So it's really a team effort, you know, from everybody, and just so proud of the group and, and just this community for really battling. And again, thank, thank you to those lawmakers. Yeah, no, it was a great job. So it's a, it's a huge win for the community. It certainly is. We did talk about ClearGov. Couple of folks I want to thank, Hector Mahia, who's just stepped up. We've had some AC issues in the community center, and I tell you what, I've, there's been like three Saturdays in a row I've called Hector. He never hesitates. He says, what do you need, boss? I'm there. So, I mean, this guy just has a work ethic, and I just really appreciate him, so.
I want him to smile.
He, he smiles a lot, you know, wears that cowboy hat, you know? He's a, he's.
Tired.
He's a big teddy bear, you know. He lifts about 500 pounds, but he's a big teddy bear, so I appreciate him, and. Yeah, just, just great, and, you know, big, big kudos to Cus, and, because I was, I was looking at some numbers today, and, you know, since this man has come on board, you know, he's saved us a total of $3.1 million. I mean, between wells, between savings out at South Hill Park for the irrigation system to just about everything. And, you know, he's even caught the eye of, of the Yakima Herald, who wants to do a little article on him and, and all the savings, and, you know, him kind of coming out of retirement. So that'll, that'll be featured sometime in May, so I just, I really appreciate him. He does not have to be working, but he cares about our community, and, you know, and I think he kind of likes me, you know? But, but he's been a mentor and, and somebody that not only works but teaches. You know, that's what I truly appreciate about him, you know, and eventually he's gonna leave us to go fishing, but while we have him, he's just, I mean, he's proved to be just a savings. I mean, I want to call him, every time I say him, I'm gonna go, ching, you saved us another bit of money, so. But yeah, he's been great, so I, I just wanted to mention that, and then, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, Cus, let the fish live. Continue working.
So yeah, thank you, Cus. And only other thing I wanted to mention was, thank you to Jafet, you know, he's, he's got the patience of Job, you know? He's, I'm just glad he's real, because, you know, with the internet outage, I was nervous, and he just says, it's gonna be all right. So, so I appreciate his calmness, and, and he just comes with customer service, you know, every single day. So thank you, Jafet, for, you know, always being that calm. And he never said, any, yeah. So I, I just, and I'll just close with, I just think I, I, you know, you, you go through challenges with staff, but I'm starting to get a staff that just, you know, they, they just step up, you know, and they, they don't complain, and, you know, great work ethic, and, you know, it, it brings me calmness, so I appreciate you guys, and every.
Well, you're good. And gal.
Thank you, everyone. This was a long meeting, but it was also a productive one. And so I thank you all for your patience in sticking it out to the end, because I know I'm done sitting. I don't know how everybody else feels, but thank you all. And so there being no further business to come before council, and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at 9:31.
Oh, yeah.
They have all their reports.
You wanna?
Did you get, did?